We will call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America. We are committed to the purpose of this land, one nation, under God, and we live in a home of liberty and peace as a whole. And we...
We're going to forego the reading of the mission and move right on down the agenda. No ceremonies, no proclamations, nobody signed up for public input, and we'll move to council comments. Counselor Bedison, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say that last week I attended Municipal Week's Municipal Day and the Senate informative. The Governor Martinez did state that she would ensure that the hold harmless was retained, so we're hopeful that that will be the case and that municipal revenues in that instance will be retained. And I also wanted to mention that today I was honored to be able to attend the opening of the Office of Sustainability in its new location and to go out to our new solar array at the wastewater treatment plant for the town. And I want to thank everyone who had a hand in that, including, I want to point out, Alex Brown, of course, the mayor who started with, informed, under his leadership, the Mayor's Climate dot-a-dot-dot Committee, because I always forget the rest of it, like everyone else does, and Robert Scavron, all the members of the office, Nick Cecilio and all those other members. This is something that's going to benefit the town, save the town money, save our residents' money over the next 20 years through this incredible power purchase agreement that Alex and Robert and Nick really were able to develop and negotiate, especially Robert Scavron, the town's attorney. So I just want to thank everyone who had something to do with that. And I'd like to thank our partners, Affordable Solar Installation Incorporated. As I said, out at the site, they are very visible in town, and what I like is while they are installing the solar array, they're spending their money in town, which is nice to see them becoming part of our town and spending their money locally. So it all works out really wonderfully. So thanks to everyone again, and while it may have been dusty, it is amazing if you get an opportunity to see that. Even the photographs are pretty outstanding. So stop by the Office of Sustainability on Pope Street. They've got some great photographs to see, and I'm sure they'll be happy to talk to you about the project. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Cook.
No comments.
Thank you, Counselor Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brown, can you tell your department heads thank you for putting up the garbage disposal there at the cemetery? And also it's been brought to my attention that there are too many kids downtown on skateboards, and I've walked to downtown a couple of times and I see that there's one sign at Broadway and one sign by College that says, "No skateboards allowed," and also there's too many kids riding the bikes downtown. And there's been a couple of places where I've seen the automobiles get out of the way for them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown.
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, as I reported in the last meeting, I'm still spending a huge majority of my time in Santa Fe at the legislative session. The of note really is the fireworks bill seems to have some legs this year, and it got a hearing today, and I was looking to see if I could find what the results of today's hearing were, but they're not available yet. If you look at the bill, it is a substitute bill. Make sure you're looking at the right bill, and I'll tell you the number. It is House Bill 373, and it's introduced by Representative Emily Kane, who is an Albuquerque firefighter. So she's doing a very good job in shepherding that bill through. There's just, there's still a ton of bills out there that are, that affect town government that we're still working on, and I won't go into great detail on all of those. I wanted to clear up some issues on, on the water that have been reported. Yes, there was a meeting on the 12th where we were given a information session about what the state engineer might like to see happen, and there was not a quorum of the council there. There was, it was informational only, and so we didn't, it wasn't a big secret meeting. We have tons of meetings. I threatened to delete my entire resume and put on there that I'm a professional meeting attender. I don't think all of our meetings that we have are newsworthy, but apparently that one had some misconceptions of it. The town has made no commitments to change our plans, and we're staying the course with, with what we've supported, which is the Grant County Water Commission's regional water And with that, we will move on. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council on February 12th, 2013.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 12th, 2013, as presented this evening and as amended and presented this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council as presented this evening from February 12th, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll go into reports, and the first report will be the Southwest Festival of the Written Word Organization will report on its first book festival in downtown Silver City September 27th, 29th, 2013. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, counsel, for allowing us to be put on the agenda. It's our privilege to stand before you and report on what we hope will be a very successful first Silver City literary festival. I keep saying book festival, but it's really a literary festival, and it will be on September 27th, 28th, and 29th. Our mission for this festival is to celebrate the power and the beauty of the written word, embracing the rich diversity of our southwestern cultures. We have called this a books festival, but it's really a literary festival because we include bloggers and journalists, slam poets, and a great deal of other contributors. We're collaborating with WIL, Western Institute for Lifelong Learning, WNMU, the Silver City Public Library, the Silver City Museum, and the Silver City Arts and Cultural District Council. But you know who we are because for the past couple of years, we've introduced the poet laureate program, we perform random acts of literature, and we've presented workshops for writers. The theme of this year's festival will be texturae, tourae, which is diversity, and zavorae, which is flavors. Our festival will be a gathering of writers and readers with presentation by over 50 authors, most of them who have confirmed that they will be here in September for us. We want this to be fun. We want to be this, a festival of joy. We want our kids doing workshops. We want people reading. We want them writing. We plan to have this festival to be free, except for a few workshops. We hope to draw over 1,000 participants, not only from Silver City or Grant County, but throughout our entire region, and if we're lucky, Colorado, Arizona, California, and so forth. One author said, "If one reads enough books, one has a fighting chance," or better, "One's chances of survival increase with each book one reads." If that sounds familiar, that comes from Sherman Alexie. Now, why would we want to have a literary festival in Silver City? Well, we want to promote Silver City's rich literary heritage, which we have. If we want to look at New Mexico's famous authors, you won't find Silver City listed. You'll find Tony Hillerman, you'll find Cormac McCarthy, Michael McGarrity, Rudolpha Anaya, and dozens of others. But we in here in Silver City have a tremendous literary heritage. I can just mention a contemporary, David Remley, who just wrote a book that made one of the top 25 on Kit Carson, and the list goes on. We want to expand reading into a public good and a socially valuable practice. We want to encourage our writers, published and unpublished, among the students, our working citizens, and our retirees that live here. We want Silver City to be the subject of visiting writers. We have Steve Harrell from Dattle, who writes about this mysterious city south of them, and it happens to be, guess what, Silver City. Just ask him. And we want to invite our visitors and residents to enjoy our downtown through their experiences and their purses. Now, where would we have this? Well, the Public Library, our museum, Seed Boat Gallery, the Murray Hotel, and some other venues, but the focus will be bring our visitors to downtown. Now, how will this be organized? Well, a group has decided that we will have 50 authors on panels, and this series of panels will be everything from poetry reading, historical writing, fiction, nonfiction, food writing, pre-teen fiction. We'll have workshops. We have Denise Chavez from Last Truce, who will be our keynote speaker. She's in charge of the Board of Books Festival. And another gentleman, which I hope you'll recall, is a guy named Michael Medoff. He wrote a book called Children of a Lesser God that they made into a movie, and he heads theater arcs at NMSU, and the list goes on. So what we wanted to do tonight was to tell you what we have planned. We need the community support. We need volunteers, and of course, we need cash to do this. So with that, I want to thank you for your time, and my colleague, Tom Hester, is the chair of our group, and if you have any questions, please ask. Thanks.
Next under reports is Ann Mackey. Do you want to talk about the elections?
Yes, I wanted to let everybody know that this is the last week at City Hall to vote either by absentee or early voting, and it concludes on Friday. So if you'd like to come in to vote, we're there from 8:00 to 5:00. The actual election is next Tuesday. It's for District 1 Counselor and District 3 Counselor. The District 1 polling place is the Silver City Women's Club, and the District 3 polling place is the Silver City Senior Center. And the polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. That's it.
Thank you. Those two very nervous people up here.
Yes, we are.
Department heads, Peter Russell, any report? Thank you, Peter Penny, any report? Thank you, Robert Escada, any report? Chief Reynolds? We were on a roll.
Mayor, City Councils, I just wanted to report, there are no reports. However, I need to answer a question from Dr. Bedison from the last meeting, which was referenced to finding out stats on the number of convictions and et cetera from the court system. It is now. Just again, the question last time was whether we could get the statistical information from the court system. magistrate courts, current system will not print out or give any statistical information based on that. However, they did put it to their programmers to see if they can come up with a program on that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And Alex Brown? And the head of our legal department, Mr. Scavron?
No.
I didn't want you to feel left out. You've had praise rained on you today. I didn't want to ruin it. So now we move. Next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2013-05. A request for an encroachment permit to allow an existing abutment wall that encroaches into the West Kelly Street right-of-way. The property is described as 0.877 plus or minus acre tract of land being part of Block 14, Black's addition to the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, and is addressed as 1006 West Market Street. The applicant is Art Sanitarium LLC. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as the mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communication from any party to this case?
No, sir.
No, sir.
The entire council is qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise, come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
I state your name.
Peter Russell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give.
That the testimony I am about to give.
In the matter before this council.
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury. Will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the director, by P&amp;Z Commissioner, or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. The applicant, staffer, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which, the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the applicant, against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" And then we will see if we can go to the vote. Mr. Coats, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. As we know, we're here to talk about an encroachment permit request for Resolution The property is described as 1006 West Market Street. Some people know it as St. Joseph's Square, Turner Apartments. It's been a number of names over the years, and the current owner is Art Sanitarium LLC. At the risk of being pedantic, I know that you want a good show, I wanted to look at a couple of the terms that we're going to be using because some of them were somewhat surprising to me when I really looked at the definitions. The first is encroach, to enter by gradual steps or by stealth into the possessions or rights of another, or to advance beyond the usual or proper limits, as in the gradually encroaching C. The encroachment that we're discussing tonight has been entered into by gradual steps, not stealth. I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not talking about a stealth, we're talking about a gradual encroachment into town right-of-way. The encroachment permit authorizes the applicant to encroach upon the public right-of-way with a building or structure under certain conditions. A structure can include a wall, a paved sidewalk. This is the one that I was struggling with when I was talking about our encroachment because I was, I kept talking about the sidewalk area that the encroachment was going across. Well, a paved pathway provided for pedestrian use is considered a sidewalk, but our Land Use Code and our Code of Ordinance is also describes the term sidewalk as identifying the primary use of that area in a public right-of-way between a street or road edge and an adjacent property line that is a pathway for pedestrians. So what I wanted to clarify is when I said sidewalk area, I meant sidewalk in the grander term of the area between the roadway and the property line that is part of the town The encroachment that we're talking about is really a small one in relation to the overall property. The property itself covers a block in the town between Market Street and Kelly Street, B Street and C Street. The encroachment is a small five-square-foot stone wall, about 30 inches high, that goes from the property line out to the curb, and it's about four, a little bit over four feet in length, but it crosses that sidewalk or sidewalk area. It's not a paved area for the sidewalk, it is just considered to be the sidewalk area between the roadway and the property line. As you can see, the property line is the dark line here, goes around, and anything outside of that is our, the town's right-of-way. So if you look closely, you'll see a wooden, wood fence here that is actually an encroachment into our right-of-way. You'll see rock wall down here. These are historical encroachments that have been there for years. It's hard to tell when they were actually built. It's part of the historical district. The rock wall here, we're not quite sure when it was built. It crosses the sidewalk area, but I just wanted to make sure that we could see that gradual encroachment, we just, our position is, the encroachment permit is for that area, and we accept that there are historical encroachments. We'd like to see no more encroachments on, from that property. As you can see, these are just pictures of the encroaching structure, the short rock wall that crosses the sidewalk area. Here's the curb. The property line actually lies inside that wooden fence. So the encroachment is not only the wooden fence, or there is an encroachment of the wooden fence, this retaining wall, but the one encroaching structure that we're actually considering tonight is this small rock wall that goes across the sidewalk. It's encroaching upon the public right-of-way. Let's see here. Here you can see the pedestrian pathway or the sidewalk area between the roadway and with the property line which lies inside that wooden fence. Here you can see that it's also causing some, some issues with parking next, within the sidewalk area. The survey that we were, we're using was, was done about the time Art Sanitarium LLC purchased the property, and it was done January 25th, 2006. The survey showed all the encroachments and the buildings on the property. It did not show the encroaching rock wall. I'm just pointing that out as we're not sure when that encroaching rock wall became in existence or was constructed, but we assume that because it wasn't on the original survey done in 2006, that it was built since then. Oh, I want to go back, excuse me, let's see. Please forgive my... Oh. This photograph here was provided by the applicant. We're, I'm not sure when that photograph was taken. This was, this photograph was taken in January of this year, so we know that there's, sometime between 2006 and now, this, this has changed somewhat, so, but we don't know when this, this wall was built. Just so you know, the Community Development Department does not run around looking for encroaching walls on historic sidewalks that aren't paved, but it was, the encroaching wall was actually discovered by the town's building official when he noticed that there was quite a bit of construction going on at this address of a stone wall, several sections of which were over six feet high. The building official is required to have, to approve a permit for any stone wall or any walls over six feet high in the town, how, how they're laid out so that they're, they're structurally sound, and there's also some setback issues with, with walls over six feet high. And so he saw this construction project going on in around March of 2012, and he realized that there is not only walls of over height and that one of the wall, or two of the walls look like there might even be a roof planned for that, and he wanted to find out what was going on. He stopped, he red-tagged the construction because of the, the over height, there was no permit, and there were issues, setbacks, and there was an issue of a fireplace being built without the fire marshal's approval, and because it was over height and he hadn't issued a building permit, he stopped the, the work in 2000, or in, I think it was November of 2012, he sent a follow-up letter because he hadn't been, been contacted about the red tag on the work, and we became involved with the discussion of the encroaching wall here. And that, that's what the encroachment permit is about tonight, is just this little section of wall at the end of this other wall that is not encroachment. The effects of that short wall is that it obstructs the sidewalk from pedestrian passage at a point of the encroachment, and that it also, because of the, because of the... at a point of the encroachment, and that it also, because of the U-shaped area that was formed by the creation of the larger walls, people are parking in this area, and it's hard then, even without an encroaching wall, for people to pass down that sidewalk area as pedestrians, because many of the cars are longer than the 17-foot that is from this wall to the property line. The parking area is approximately, like I said, 17 feet from the south wall out to the property line, and compact, our parking regulations in the Land Use Code of 2010 require a 16-foot length for a compact car, and anything more than that of an 18-foot length for parking spaces, and that's for any kind of new development or any kind of parking area that's being created. And the parking spaces, according to the Land Use Code, need to be contained entirely within the property of the owner rather than on public right of way. We sent out letters to all the property owners within 300 feet of the property to let them know about the public hearing and to solicit comments from them, and we received no comments in objection to the encroachment permit. One neighbor was very much in support of the wall, of the encroaching wall, and commented that there were no sidewalks along that block or on that side of Kelly Street for a number of blocks. One other person who is a property owner from out of town called and just asked where it was, and his comment was he had no objection to it, he just wanted to just find out what we were talking about, since he was an out-of-town property owner. The town council may approve an encroachment permit if it finds that the requested permit conforms to the town's comprehensive plan, the Land Use Code, and any relevant policies adopted by the town, and the proposed encroachment does not endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the community, and the proposed encroachment is the minimum necessary to make reasonable use of the applicant's property. All three of those findings have to be met for an approval. In the Community Development Department's review of the application, it was found, the application is found to be complete, no town department had objections to the application, and there was no evidence of fact or public opinion that would indicate the application could not meet the required findings. In analyzing the encroachment, we came up with some recommended conditions for the encroachment if it were to be approved, and that one is which no further encroachments on the parcel shall occur. We'll take, we recognize that historically there are encroachments on the property, but we want to, we hope that by permitting this particular encroachment, that will put an end to any further encroachments from that piece of property, and that the town may require a removal of all or any part of an existing encroaching structure or use on the parcel after 90 days' written notice to the property owners. This is actually part of the encroachment permit. It's not a condition that we're recommending, it's just part of the Land Use Code. And what it says basically is that if the town decides to put in a sidewalk, a paved pedestrian pathway along that sidewalk area, they can give a 90-day written notice and the encroachment would have to be removed by the property owner. The town utility meters and access points must be accessible, we found no reason to believe that they aren't accessible with this encroachment now, but we just wanted to make sure that that condition was in there. The sidewalk areas adjacent to the encroachment into the right of way must remain free and clear of obstructions and accessible to pedestrians at all times. That was a concern that our code enforcement department had, that the parking area that's created by the U-shaped stone wall is encroaching as well into the public right of way. And they were concerned about pedestrian having access, not only having to go around the encroachment, but also having to go all the way around the parking area. And that the parking area adjacent to the encroachment shall be posted for compact vehicles only, and that would assist in creating no further parking encroachments next to the encroaching structure. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Well, I'm not sure if it's more relevant to the applicant, or, but you did say you reviewed the encroachment permit, the department did?
The application, yes.
The application, and this is the application, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a question. In the review of the application, did you note that the encroachment permit for an existing wall abutment into the town of Silver City's C Street, this is on Kelly Street?
You're right. No, I did not notice that.
So that's fairly problematic since the hearing is about a wall abutment on Kelly Street, unless we can note that there's a... Are we permitted to note that there's a...
All the applications was based on Kelly Street?
Yes.
I believe the applicant is here tonight and can testify to the typo. Mr. Scavron, would that be an issue?
Handwritten typo.
As long as we've noticed to the public, mentioned where the encroachment's going to be, there's no harm done. I can fix the typo.
Because I was confused when reading the material, I wanted to make sure that we were still on Kelly Street, so. Yeah, it's a handwritten...
Thank you for pointing that out, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page, still on Kelly, thank you.
Couple of questions. On your second-to-last condition, it has the sidewalk areas adjacent to the encroachment in the right of way must remain free and clear of obstruction and accessible to pedestrians at all times. Looking at the pictures, it's not now. There's, looks like a railroad tie-framed walkway, just, I don't know which direction this picture was taken, but up the street underneath the white picket fence.
Is that the picture that you're...
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the one that's got the red and white truck, the back of the red and white truck. It's farther up.
We looked at this encroachment as the issue rather than historical encroachment such as that railroad tie retaining wall.
But to give them a condition that it must remain free when we're acknowledging that it's not free and clear right now, is that an issue?
Pardon?
Is that an issue?
I think we were looking at the pathway area, seeing that that would still allow pedestrian pathway. What the concern that was brought up was about the parking in, just beyond the encroachment was creating the obstruction.
Go back to the, the picture that I'm looking at is actually taken from the other side facing... Right there. The picture on the top, you can see just beyond the topic of the request, and it looks like it goes within a foot or so of the street, of the curb.
The stone things next to the sidewalk there, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I don't know if that's, I can't tell if that's stone or railroad tie, but...
I believe those are stone.
Oh, this box here?
Yes.
What are we looking at, right here? Wrong. Oh, this one here. I have a pointer.
It's looking as well as...
Do you, oh, you have a pointer?
These, I believe, are stone. They were part of the historical encroaching areas, yes.
Up above, right there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Which is these two, that is the same as that.
Oh, I see, I see.
And so what they're doing is framing that walkway out, that behind that fence is a residential structure, and the walkway goes up to their front porch. But the, like I said, the application was for that, but we didn't consider that, sir.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not setting them up in that condition that we're saying you have to keep it free and clear, when the pictures we have show that it's not free and clear. I don't object to it. The, if you look right past that, the wall in the next block is a foot and a half away from the curb as well, so it's not likely we're going to be building a sidewalk in it.
But you mean this wall here?
The other way.
Yeah.
Go up to where the jackends are, and there's a masonry wall up there that's almost to the street.
Another historical encroachment.
Yeah, and I'm just more concerned that by saying that if we include that into the final decision, that they can't meet it. Or they could, but they'd have to deconstruct what may be another historical encroachment. Come on up here. I was waiting for you to raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think the issue that we're interested in is that there are no further encroachments. We understand that there are encroachments that are multiple on this particular parcel, as there are all over the city. We would just like to preserve our right to put a sidewalk in, should the town decide to put a sidewalk in on our own property, and that there be no sort of adverse possession established here. So with this effort to formalize this encroachment, we're trying to put a stop to further encroachments, and I think the intent is, we just don't want any further encroachments, and that this is an instrument for formalizing that understanding. We however reserve always our right, should we need in the future to see any of those encroachments removed in order to construct some public infrastructure for public benefit.
Would the railroad ties or stone, it's hard to tell what that is, would that be considered the same as a rock wall, or is it the same as the plant up on the corner?
I think that, I don't know the date of that encroachment, I mean, it's pretty clearly encroaching based on the survey. The issue at hand here is that I believe that that precedes the current owner, and the issue that generated the inquiry on this site was the current owner's activities in constructing the wall, and because we were uncertain as to when that little stone wall that is perpendicular to the street was constructed, we thought, well, just in order to stem further encroachments, we would use this as an instrument, and it's tied to the parking area and the additional wallwork that was being done. We recognize that he, or the LLC that purchased this, purchased it with a lot of existing encroachments. We just don't want to yield on them or to allow them to exist without comment, that's all.
Could, Mr. Scavron?
Well, I'm following Peter's thing, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put in your findings, or at least a statement in the resolution, that this is not, the town does not waive any right to encroachments which are not specifically addressed in this application, because apparently there are other encroachments, and one might read that since you dealt with the subject now, your silence on these other encroachments is taken as a waiver of our rights to, of the town's rights to, for whatever reason, to challenge these encroachments at some future date. So you might make specific notice that it was noted that there are other encroachments which are not the subject of this application, and the town does not waive its right to proceed against these encroachments at such a future time.
I think that's probably a single approach both for the town and the applicant, that we don't give them a condition that there aren't any violations, and we protect the town's interest in the future that, should we decide to do something with it.
I think that's the next one we need, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Bedison?
Don't leave here, yeah. So during this discussion, you know, it's been several times stated that the town understands that the applicant purchased the property with existing historic encroachments, and now it's been recommended that we not waive our rights on going back and dealing with that. So I find it somewhat problematic, because there's historic encroachments all over town. And, I mean, we've already noted one in a photograph further up, I mean, I guess I just don't want our residents to start, you know, to panic his own type thing. And I also, you know, I know we're talking about this specific thing, and this...
Make sure you keep it to the specific.
We have this specific thing, but now we have broadened it to include things that they've already noted are historic to the property. But now we've been suggested that we broaden this somewhat, while preserving the rights of the property owner, but also preserving the town's rights as well. Do you see what I'm saying? We're broadening the scope in some respects, while narrowing it specifically to this thing that we're addressing here. At least that's my perspective.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Bedison, there are many, many encroachments in the town, and we usually don't deal with them until a particular issue comes up that requires that it be addressed. It's common that the town agrees to the encroachment permit with the stipulation that it could have the encroachment removed within 90 days. It's very common that a lot of these encroachments will not in fact impact on public infrastructure projects, but you can't tell. In this instance, this came up in the case of the wall being constructed, and that little perpendicular wall is a part of the larger wall construction that was noted by the building official. Rather than try and expand this to every single encroachment on the property and burden the owner with surveying them, or the town with surveying them, we just wanted, A, for the owner to not make any further encroachments, and B, to acknowledge that the town has the right within 90 days to remove it. So I don't think that this is broadening the scope of the request in any way that's detrimental to the owner. It's always the case that the town doesn't waive its rights even on encroaching property, but we've always found a way to accommodate those encroachments or to work with people. I can't think of a single instance where an encroachment has been removed, at least since I've been here, but you need to reserve the right in case. I think that, you know, we've worked with Mr. Acosta, who's representing the LLC here, I think there's an agreement to, you know, what is being done here. And as I say, we just, in the context of the construction that was unpermitted, we just want to formalize that we really don't want any... we just want to formalize that we really don't want any more additional encroachments. The other issue is the compact car. And it's true that the kind of created space requires cars to hang out over to the curb. Maybe, you know, extra big cars even slightly over it. And it was the code enforcement's request that, that be limited to compact cars. There's an issue on the other side of the building where I know the owner's interested in also having some kind of head-in parking. That's on Market Street. We have some concerns about that. But that's not an issue this evening. It's just that we're trying to establish certain standards of what we expect when, you know, people are building on their properties.
Mr. Mayor, like the concern that you had already addressed about the sidewalk areas adjacent to the encroachment into the right-of-way, and it's remain free and clear of obstructions and accessible pedestrians at all times that we just talked about. My concern is would be with the town may require removal of all or part of any existing encroaching structures. So I know that, I mean, I've been on the council for a number of years, but that includes all of the historic encroaching structures that are not subject to, that are not the subject of this particular thing.
Yes, but for instance, the fence that's built on top of the railroad ties does not seem an onerous removal. There are no buildings encroaching. It's strictly, you know, sort of fencing materials and some fill and things like that.
I just wanted to clarify that we are addressing one particular object in the encroachment on this particular issue. So, okay, thank you.
The fact is, if we don't retain that right on all encroachments, that is an illegal transfer of property to personal use. And we will be in a world of trouble with that. So we have to retain all of our rights that we're entitled to by law for public property. And I just want to make sure that, that we're doing it in a fashion that, that protects the town and doesn't, in this case, doesn't overburden the applicant instantly. So any other questions for, regarding the town's synopsis of the case? Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Jim. Mr. Acosta, would you like to present the applicant's case?
My name is Michael Acosta, Mr. Cook, Ray Moronesa. Sorry, it's good to come home even though there's, it's to wind the snow. Thank you for hearing me this evening. First of all, there has been no encroachment at all by the current owner. Now, the abutment that we're talking about was constructed way before 2004, when this survey was done. In fact, the staff kindly put in a Google map in here and shows a 2004 building.
Structure?
Which is also in that packet. Now, that structure, you can see on the Google map, the white, that white garage covering is in the Google map. Those words, those items that they have to validate. The, the structure itself shows, the photo that you showed, 2004, shows the existing abutment that was already there. Now, the stonemason went out and searched and found stones and matched this, this wall beautifully, which alerted, of course, immediately alerted Mr. Farley that there was, there was something not. He, he believed that the whole thing had been built. But it wasn't. It was just built upon in the back of that, of that structure. The existing fence, as you see in this photo, this kind of structure with the railroad ties that you're, you're, you noticed was done back in the 1960s in this area. I remember living here when that was, that was quite the fad to use those railroad ties. That construction was also historic and pre-existing prior to the, to the code. I really appreciate the assistance of your staff, particularly Mr. Cook. He's been most courteous and helpful. And I was able to agree with everything that they were saying as to what they were, their concerns. I only have one concern that, that I'd like to bring to your attention. Other than that, there's no, there'll be no further encroachments. There are historic encroachments on this property. However, I fully expect that if, if one is brought before, or it is tagged or something, that we'll be back before the council again to address each one individually, as it should be. This is no blanket, and I don't see how any, anybody could even believe that just one blanket approval of this encroachment, which is clearly set out, is a blanket approval of all the encroachments. And that just makes no sense. But the language suggested by Mr. Scavron, perhaps should be in every one of your findings because it clearly separates this issue. And I don't know if there's any other issues that may arise by law. And I don't believe that's the case. But this clearly points out to the individual, and I agree, there would be no further encroachments. And this does not give a blanket approval to do anything. The, the town may require removal of the abutment. Please, pave, I mean, put in the sidewalk. We'll, we'll remove it immediately. It'll only improve the, the value of the property. It's also kind of a silly issue. But if you were to put sidewalks in there, we would, the owner would gladly fix that up. We'd probably do a restructuring of the whole thing just to improve the quality of the property with the city's assistance. So it is a, it is a, an issue there. And as you know, historically in this town, the surveys at the beginning showed the property being right on the line, not, not, not showing, and in fact, maybe all the way out to the curb on the original surveys and from the, whenever they started doing that back in the day. Today, we, we acknowledge that that existing fence that the mayor pointed, railroad ties that the mayor pointed out are somewhat of an encroachment on the property line. Again, they were historically there since, I don't know how long, since the 60s, along with the rest of this fence. That too would be addressed if it would, if the city found issue to bring that to, to, to the council, then we would, we would gladly come forward and address that as well. The town, utility meters and other access points are not in any danger as the staff has gone out and checked. And the sidewalks adjacent to the encroachment in the right-of-way must remain free. And he keeps a beautiful property out there. That is stone in there, gravel on the walkway there where there should be a sidewalk. But that is an old stone step that was also, I've always seen it there. And it, it was part of some other structure that was brought from somewhere. But you can see it's a stone, stepping stone that goes up into the property. Finally, the parking area. This parking area has always been there. It's historically been the parking area. To require that only compact cars park there now seems somewhat of a reach in this case. You were shown one picture where a truck was improperly parked and it was sticking out. But I parked a Lincoln Town Car in there, and it has been off the road. It may stick out to, to, within a foot of the curb. But it, it does go all the way into that parking area. I think that's a little much to ask for it to be limited to compact cars. However, again, that's your decision to make. And if, if that be your decision, fine. We would, we would, we would comply. The, the fact remains that the minimum has been, the minimum necessary to make this a reasonable use of this property has been done years ago. It continues to be the, the case in this, in this case. The wall only adds to the aesthetic appearance of the, of the property. It helps the property. It does not hinder anything. The neighbors all, all approved of it. And it doesn't hurt anyone. The encroachment does not endanger the health of public safety or the, or the general welfare of the community. It adds to the community. And everything about this is in compliance with, with your code. The, the structure itself is in compliance. Mr. Farley and Mr. Russell have gone out to the property. The walls were properly constructed. An architect designed them. They were all properly built. You saw some question of a fireplace that hasn't been met. As, as I'm sure you deal with time and time again, people begin their construction and do these things without the permits. That, that happened in this case. And of course, that's what alerted everyone. Unfortunately, it was already constructed. It was already finished. But there was enough photo history and logs and everything else to show your staff that it was done properly. Proper rebar, proper structure was done. It's, it's to code. So the only thing left to finish is the fireplace, which is going to be done. And then the fire marshal can check for the flue and everything else that needs to be done on that fireplace, and it will be done to code as well. And that, that was the, the basis of what started this whole ball of problem rolling, the non-compliance by the owners. And so as Mr. Russell pointed out, it was flagged properly. It was stopped. They, they looked into it. We worked with them diligently to make sure everything is what they want. Answered all the questions they had as to some of the anomalies that occurred there. There is no other reason that you should not, you should not grant this encroachment permit as it's unposed by anyone. I would ask that you do, in fact, add that language that was suggested by Mr. Scavron. I believe of everything that was raised here tonight, that is an issue that seems to haunt, be haunting there. And, and we have no intention of doing any other construction onto city property on this, at this location. That's not, that's not the intent of the owners. And I thank you.
I will. It's going to be quick. Counselor Bedison?
Mr. Acosta, which Google map are you referring to? Are you referring to the aerial photograph of...
That's correct. I believe it's about page eight of your packet.
And looking at what you've provided towards this photograph, could you please orient me to the way you believe this is? Because I don't believe it's what you think it is.
Can you tell me if you can on this Google map?
No, I, I do, sir. But if you believe that that's this carport, it's on the wrong side. This is the house here with the...
That's not the Google map.
Okay, then you'll have to show me. You'll have to show me what Google map you're talking about because I can't see in my packet.
Jim, do you have it, the Google?
There's no Google map in our packet. No, there is no Google map in our packet.
It was in the packet that was provided by Jimmy.
What page is that? Okay, so he told me this was not it, that this is the one, correct?
I guess that's the one. This is not, this is not a Google map. This is a town aerial photograph that was taken in August 2007.
Okay.
To make sure that the record is clear, please show Mr. Acosta that map.
Take your wind.
Make sure that we identify it.
Our aerial photograph?
This structure was demolished in 2005.
How's that happen?
I have no idea. This, this is not a Google map.
Okay.
And then I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I, I stand corrected on this. It is a, a city aerial map showing the same building that I'm pointing out. However, that carport is, was removed before the date that's being alleged here.
And it, it there's... Are you going to find why this is pertinent to the discussion?
Oh, no. I understand. I, I pointed that out in the discussion because all these things occurred before the owner took control of the property. These were all existing, historically existing issues, the abutment, the fence, and all these other encroachments. And that's why I pointed that out.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
No, I was just asking, because he had stated that this, like he just stated, that this was a existing, but I can't, I couldn't find it on here.
Any other questions? Are there any witnesses in support of the applicant's case? Seeing none, any witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case? I have one question. On, if you go to, what's page 15 in our packet, which shows a picture looking down the, the curb, has the, has a kind of color blank. So it's either a red and silver, a red and white truck. There's a stop sign at the top of the picture. The, one of the conditions was that we post for compact cars only. When, if you look at that truck, it's sitting about equal to the encroachment. So I'm not sure what we're accomplishing by putting in a requirement for compact cars when we've already eliminated the space as available sidewalk. Yes, I'm asking you, Jim.
The space between the wall that forms the U area, the, the larger wall on the southern portion of that U area, is 17 feet from the property line. So you have 17 feet before you begin to encroach into the sidewalk. This truck is, is longer than 17 feet. I went out and measured a number of vehicles. Compact vehicles run between 14, 15 feet. Anything longer is generally 17 to 28 or 30. But like an SUV, this truck would probably be running 18 to 20 feet, especially, depending on, but this, this particular truck was pulled fairly close to the stone wall and yet is hanging into the right-of-way. The town's right-of-way. That's, and that was the concern that code enforcement brought up in their comments is that with the parking the way it is right now, there's, there's a total encroachment of cars into those, into that area unless they are less than 16 feet long.
So our code actually says you have to have a certain amount of feet between the sidewalk and, or the town easement and the front of where they could park?
The code says that parking areas are on private property, not hanging into town property.
Okay. That, that makes a huge difference.
It's historic and there before.
That's kind of irrelevant because we're, we're dealing with an encroachment today and a permit today. What, what I want to make sure that I, we have evidence that supports, one is that we have a consistent enforcement of the code, which I don't want to build case law all over town by this hearing that people are blocking sidewalks everywhere. Secondly, is make sure that we're, we're sticking to our code. And I think that's important. Mr. Russell?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that the parking standards are specific in terms of the lengths required and the fact that the parking needs to be entirely contained on the parcel. I think another issue here is that there's a number of cars parked there. It's a fine use. But you just want to provide ample room for the person to walk around the back of the car and go through the gate, you know, without having to go into the street if you're going to develop this kind of backup, you know, head-in parking. It's, it's a, I do think it's, you see it a lot in town where, where people are parking on sidewalks. It's kind of a problem. It's hard to enforce. We certainly... We certainly don't like to, you know, lay down examples where we agreed to it and here and we didn't over there, so consistency is always an issue, as you just pointed out.
Thank you. Are there any questions for any witness? Mr. Acosta, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record? Mr. Scavron?
Because the language that I'm suggesting and that Mr. Acosta's comfortable with is going to be in your, in the resolution, I think that we need to address the language now and get on the record, get Mr. Acosta's agreement to it.
Right, Jim?
I got it.
Will you read it back into the record?
I will.
Thank you.
This is an amendment to the resolution 213-05. In the now therefore be a resolved portion, a new section six. The parties acknowledge that there may be other encroachments by this property into town rights of way which have not been addressed in this application. Accordingly, the granting of this encroachment permit does not waive the right of the town to challenge any other encroachments by this property that may exist.
Very good. Is there any objection?
No, sir, not at all.
Thank you. Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
While I'm standing comfortable with the parking issue that is being raised, of course, this is your decision, Mr. Mayor, you're in the council, and I have already voiced my opinion of what my concern is to that. I believe leaving it completely out of this resolution completely does not either way, address it either way, and therefore leaves it still an open issue and does not tie you to any other decision in this town. I want to thank the Mr. Mayor and councilors.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application or ring its decision?
Yes, sir.
Somebody want to make a motion, or do you want help with the motion? Yes. Let's get the section six up here for you. Counselor.
I move to approve resolution number 2013-05. A request for an encroachment permit to allow an existing abundant wall that encloses into the West Kelly Street right-of-way. The property is described as a 0.877 minus or plus acre tract of land being part of Block 14, black sedition to the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, and is addressed as 1006 West Market Street. The applicant is Art Sanitarium LLC. With this language put in on section six, the parties acknowledge that there may be other encroachments by this property who town, into the town right-of-way which have not been addressed in this application. Accordingly... Would you like me to translate the language? Please.
The granting of this encroachment, granting...
Accordingly, the...
Granting of...
The granting of this encroachment permit does not waive the right of the town to challenge any other encroachment by this property that may exist. I read it. Under the findings... On number one, the requested permit conforms to the town's comprehensive plan, the land use code, and any relevant policies adopted by the town.
Yes, we have to meet all three. So, in your motion, you state that all three findings have been met.
You have a reason for that?
You can just state that the three required findings have been met.
The three requirements have been met.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I have one bit of discussion I think would be a friendly amendment, is item D on section one, for the therefore be a resolved, be deleted, because it's being replaced in lieu of by D as in dog. And that's the discussion that brought up section six. Is that a friendly amendment, Counselor Ring? Yes, yes. And Counselor Morris?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
I need that paper. Mr. Scavron?
The record is clear that there was an error in the application mentioning the encroachment being located on C Street, and that's in the record, that we were not talking about C Street. It's ministerial, so we'll correct it.
We have a motion and a second, and no further discussion for approval of resolution number 2013-05. A request for an encroachment permit to allow an existing abundant wall that encroaches into the West Kelly Street right-of-way. The property is described as 0.877 plus or minus acre tract of land being part of Block 14, black sedition to the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, and is addressed as 1006 West Market Street. The applicant is Art Sanitarium LLC. The resolution was amended to add a section six, and they therefore, to read, the parties acknowledge that there may be other encroachment by this property on, well, it is hard to read, onto the town right-of-way which have not been addressed in this application. Accordingly, the granting of this encroachment permit does not waive the right of the town to challenge any other encroachment by this property that may exist. Additionally, in section one of the therefore, item D as in dog, was deleted. My call.
Counselor Morris?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Chris?
Aye.
Counselor Dennis?
Aye.
Motion carries, and that concludes this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go again. The next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled, "Approval/Disapproval of the Recovery of Costs of the Demolition Associated with the Remaining Remnants of a Dilapidated Mobile Home and the Cleanup of Strained Debris at 612 Swan Street, Silver City, New Mexico." The public hearing will include a report of the recovery of costs of the demolition. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had experted discussion with any person regarding this subject matter of this hearing, or had any communication from any party to this case?
No, sir.
No, sir?
No, sir.
You are all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
I am standing.
Aye, Julie, aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That the testimony I am about to give...
That the testimony I am about to give...
In the matter before this council...
In the matter before this council...
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth...
The truth, the whole truth, but nothing but the truth...
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The applicant, the Town of Silver City, shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief, and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case, or this case, shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made to the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer will ask the applicant, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record? Julie?
Good evening, Mayor, Marshal, and Councilor and staff. Tonight, we're here to present a hearing for recovery of cost of repair and demolition. This will pertain to a piece of property within the city and town limits that originated with some complaints of dangerous situations existing there since 2008. I just want to make for the record aware that the owner of this property is deceased, so there is some confidentiality matters involved here. However, he is on file with the county assessors and clerk's office. We also conducted an extensive search on this property by contacting Greg County Probate Judge Velia Miranda, who also assisted us in a search on this property, in which her findings were there were no probate actions filed, no will filed, or is there been any change of ownership on file for this property? To begin with, under chapter eight, article two, building code section eight twenty-three, AMB of the 2010 Town of Silver City codes of ordinances, the town has adopted the 1997 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. This report is being made pursuant to the required provision of this code. The piece of property we're discussing, this is the legal description as follows, 612 Swan Street, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. The property code is 3-081-103-029-249, and also includes what is now was part of a dilapidated mobile home under account number 43136 with the county. The book is 274, page 4094. This is in the Fraser block of 147, the west fifty feet of lots 10, 12, 14, and 16, which is approximately one point, correction on that, .115 acres. This property is located on the southeast corner of Seventh Street and Swan intersections. You can tell over there by the highlighted green area, those are the actual parcels. We went ahead and had been monitoring this property. Some of the complaints were feral dogs living inside the ruins, which almost attacked one of our code officers. Luckily, we had animal control with us. It also consisted of torn metal debris scattered all over the property. It also consisted of possible squatters that we've had to have removed off the property. It also had reports of people stripping what was left of any copper wire out of the remains of the mobile home. So what we did is we moved forward with the abatement process and with the assistance of our building inspector and our fire marshal. And I had contacted four construction companies to get bids as to what it would cost to get this area cleaned up. Two of the companies failed to respond back. Two did come through, and we went with the town manager's approval for the lesser bid, which was by the Fowler Brothers Construction Company. The quote we received also included the removal, hauling, and landfill tipping fees to the Southwest Solid Waste Authority. The quote that was submitted by the Fowler Brothers was in the amount of $7,180.62. Additional costs paid by the town were to the Greg County Clerk's Office in the amount of $25 for recording fees, and pending another $25 if the lien should be approved. And then, the town attorney fees of $322.13 were also added to the figure. And then the certified mailings pursuant to the provision of this code via the post office came to the amount of $35.10. So the total cost of recovery that we are seeking for the town will be $7,587.85. And at this point in time, because of the length of research and all the investigation we've had to do, I feel that it would be appropriate for the town to recover its costs back by placing a lien on the property. What I brought here is a couple of pictures to show you from beginning to end, so Jacqueline can put up the next picture. You can see over time, just weather conditions, and no one there to maintain it, and it started becoming quite a hazardous structure. So go ahead and click to the next one. Is that the one with the clean lot? Okay. You can see that we had to put up our tape around it, because we noticed there were schoolchildren that would get off the buses in the area, start poking around there, and we didn't want anybody to get hurt. On the next photo. So that's looking from the intersection of Seventh and Swan, and this is what the neighbors in the area had to view. They felt, at times, we received some complaints that they felt they were forgotten, and that they didn't know how we could allow something like this to exist. But we did explain to them the process of dealing with something like this was going to take a little bit more time because of the research involved. Next picture. Go ahead and go to the next. You can see in there, that's where we had some feral pit bulls living in there, so that was another condition we had to worry about for schoolchildren. Next picture. We had to post it by law that it was a condemned building. I checked with the county clerk, she's been very helpful in this case also, and we have received no protest of any type unless somebody is here. So at this time, I'm going to leave it to your decision, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
Any questions for this witness?
No, sir.
Is there any witnesses in support of this case? Seeing none, any witnesses in opposition to this case? Seeing none, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
No, sir.
Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness?
No, sir.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Scavran.
The motion should be to pardon. The motion should be to order that the assessment be levied, and the second part was that it shall be in the form of a special assessment as a lien upon the property. Because you have the discretion to go against the individual or the heirs, there is no individual, there's no heirs, so placing a lien on the property would be the most appropriate way.
Go, Mike.
I move to assess upon the property the charges, whatever the dollar amount is, and that such charges shall be a special assessment and lien upon the property.
Mr. Mayor. I move to have the assessment in the amount of $7,587.85 placed upon the property and assessed in a special lien on said property. With the address. In regards to the property cleanup at 612 Swan Street, Silver City, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, that's the second motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Everybody is comfortable and confident that they know what we're voting on?
Yes, I do.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, no further discussion. Do I need a roll call?
No, this is not a resolution or ordinance, this is just a motion to order.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, and that concludes this hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Besen.
I move for a short break.
Second.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second for a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, board and races. Recall this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is under unfinished business, approval disapproval of ordinance number 1215 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16-44 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Incentive Review Committee. This is the final reading on this ordinance, and as I explained in the first one, in September 13, 2011, Section 16-42 of said code was amended, so the composition of the Incentive Review Committee was changed from seven to five members. However, we were later notified by staff that 16-44 terms needed to be amended to, from seven to five as well, and that is exactly what this ordinance does. Is there any questions in the audience? Seeing none, any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
The agenda states relating to the composition of the Incentive Review Committee rather than to the terms of office, as is stated in the ordinance title. Can we make that, is that immaterial?
I think it's immaterial due to the content, the publishing. Mr. Scavran?
I don't think it's misled the public. The general subject matter has been explained.
And addressed prior?
Yes, so I don't think that this misuse of the word composition includes many aspects.
Okay.
The people and the conditions and the terms are all rolled into composition.
In order to make the motion, do you prefer the motion is made based on the agenda or based on the title of the ordinance?
No, it has to be the ordinance.
Okay, that's how I wanted to.
Read the heading on that ordinance. Any other questions? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1215 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16-44 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to the terms of office of the Incentive Review Committee.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Besen?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of Town of Silver City Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2012. Mr. Stone, we got to you.
Thank you. I would like to say, first of all, that this audit report is as good as it gets. We have no comments, we've got an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. However, next year, if I'm after any kind of public hearing, there's going to be a comment. Okay? Sorry, I had to put that in. And if Dan needs to swear me in on that, though, I will accept it.
We did invite you to a previous meeting, sir. With all due respect.
You were second in line, and I had to be a dimming, that's why. Anyway, as I said, it's as good as it gets. We have an unqualified opinion on the financial statements, an unqualified opinion being as good as it gets. It sounds kind of a funny language, but unqualified opinion means that we have no qualifications. We express an opinion that the financial statements are fairly stated. We also have an unqualified opinion on federal compliance, and we had no findings related to the audit. The reason I'm here this late is because, I want to point out that the audit report was done timely and was released timely, it just takes a while to get to the council and get me there, obviously. So, that's basically all I have to say, except that I think, one of the things that perhaps people don't know, is that this town council and staff are responsible for about 75 million dollars, managing 75 million dollars worth of assets, and about 21 million dollars worth of revenue annually. You know, we talk about Silver City being a smaller town, but those are pretty good numbers, and I think it's important to the council, at least the most important thing to me, would be to me if I was a counselor, is that the numbers that I'm getting from staff are numbers that can be relied on, and I can tell you right now, we had no adjustment to those numbers for the year ended June 30, 2012. That's basically all I have, except to remind you guys, it is an action item, you either have to approve it or disapprove it.
Thank you again. Before we go on, I think we, by all rights, we need to recognize those that are truly responsible for the day-to-day operation and ensuring that we have good numbers, and I know our finance, most of our finance crew is sitting here, and on behalf of the council, we thank you. We understand it was a tough year, there were some staff changes that made it very difficult, and you all stepped up to the plate and performed better than anyone could expect, as well as the leadership from Mr. Brown. And I really ought to write this speech, because we give it every year, but...
Record it, play it back.
I should, or I should just tell anybody that's interested to record it, play it back, but Mr. Brown, your leadership and skill in managing the compliance and the funds is always been exceptional. And I don't remember off the top of my head, it's were either eight or nine or more years that we've had no findings on our audit. And when you look around the state, and you look at the watch list from the state auditor, it's large, and many local governments are struggling to get an audit done, they're struggling to meet compliance requirements and all the general accounting principles. And year after year after year, our staff has managed to do that, where we come out with no findings. And that is really remarkable, and I really hope that the papers pick that up. Especially in this day and time when people question the management of public funds, that it's not an issue in Silver City. We've done well, we can account for all your money, and we use it properly, and we have all the supporting documents to show that. We truly appreciate all of your work throughout the year, and making sure that we are able to do that, and it makes us look good. So, thank you, all of you.
Just one other thing I will say, here's, I just had a meeting with the State Doctor's Office a couple of weeks ago, and there are 60 entities minimum that are on the at-risk designation, that have an at-risk designation now because they're not current in their audits, 60 entities throughout the state, counties, municipalities, school districts, so...
It's a major issue. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the Town of Silver City Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2012.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the Town of Silver City Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30, 2012. There being no further discussion, should we do a roll call?
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Besen?
Aye.
Motion carries, and our report is complete. And just so, those of you that have copies of the audit report, if you, when you're done with it, please return it back to the clerk or the finance department, because they need those for different things. And you're welcome to it. You waited three hours, or two hours, I can't do math. That's the least we could do for you, Mike. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1218, an ordinance permitting transfer of certain real property, commonly known as the tennis court parking lot, to Silver Consolidated Schools, all pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 48-24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. The parking lot in question is the lot that is over by Fox Field and the tennis courts that we just refurbished, and the schools have an opportunity to access funding that would pave the lot and would be a benefit. There would also be a requirement that the lot remain for public use. And in addition, we've had some discussions with the schools regarding a portable classroom that is no longer in use and is placed over by the Ben Altermourano Sports Complex, and I believe it was formerly the Secure School. And I would like to see the, on the notice of intent, right before the last whereas, that we insert another whereas, that would state whereas Silver Consolidated Schools has ownership of a portable building located at the Ben Altermourano Sports Complex that will be transferred to the town for public use. And then, Robert, do I need to address that contract, or just mention it?
Well, the contract is in appendix, so you could mention that the, that some modification of the contract to include the transfer of the portable building to the town will be inserted in that contract.
So in number two, we're pushing for 30 days of execution of the agreement, which is in addition to the contract. And then on number seven, or after number six, we would insert, "SCS, at closing this transaction, shall transfer ownership of it to the town of a particular portable building known to the parties and presently located at Ben Altermourano Sports Complex, which building shall be used by the town for public purposes." And being that the schools are a division of the state, and it's public to public, we are allowed to do that within the applicable laws. Is there any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, any discussion, comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. This notice of intent should address the ability of that building in the whereases, and which would have to be somewhat of an amendment to, or noted in a motion, correct? But the other items that you addressed, we can just...
The entire NOI is authorizing us to enter into a contract with the schools. We're not necessarily approving the contract tonight, you have it before you as an example of where we're going. Having the building in the whereas is an expression of the ongoing dialogue between the town and the Silver Schools regarding the two properties. Counselor Besen?
For clarification, though, in moving to approve the NOI, that additional whereas should be placed in NOI as an amendment at this point?
I would like this to be...
Okay, so that wording may want to be given to Counsel Lewis.
Is there any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1218, an ordinance permitting the transfer of certain real property, commonly known as the tennis court parking lot, to Silver Consolidated Schools, all pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 48-24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code, with an amendment adding a whereas at the bottom of the whereases, insert Silver Consolidated Schools has ownership of a...
For clarification, though, in moving to approve the NOI, that additional whereas should be placed in NOI as an amendment at this point?
I would like to see...
Okay. So that wording may want to be given to Counselor Lewis.
Is there any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I move for approval of notice of intent, ordinance number 1218, an ordinance permitting the transfer of certain real property commonly known as the tennis court parking lot to Silver Consolidated Schools, all pursuant to chapter 48, section 48 dash 24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. With an amendment adding a whereas at the bottom of the whereas, insert Silver Consolidated Schools has ownership of a portable building located at the Ben Alton Moreno Sports Complex that will be transferred to the town for public use.
Mr. Mayor, my second motion is stated.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion and a second to approve notice of intent, ordinance number 1218, an ordinance permitting the transfer of certain real property commonly known as the tennis court parking lot to Silver Consolidated Schools, all pursuant to chapter 48, section 48 dash 24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. With the amendment of an insertion of whereas, Silver Consolidated Schools has ownership of a portable building located at the Ben Alton Moreno Sports Complex that will be transferred to the town for public use. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, approval disapproval of resolution number 2013 dash 11, the Town of Silver City approving an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonial Infrastructure Fund. Mr. Pena.
Mayor, counsel. What this resolution will do is it's a support for an application. We're looking to get some funding for a street and drainage improvements project on Silver Street. This will be the second phase of this project. Our first phase went from 32nd Street to Pine. We'd like to get some additional funding so we could complete that all the way to US 180. What we're looking at, the improvements are paving, project development, sidewalks, curb and gutter, striping, signage, and drainage improvements where needed.
Any questions from the audience? There's no audience left. Seeing none, any comments, questions from the council? Seeing none, no, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of resolution number 2013 dash 11, the Town of Silver City approving an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonial Infrastructure Fund.
Mr. Mayor, my second motion is stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion, to approve resolution 2013 dash 11, the Town of Silver City approving an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonial Infrastructure Fund. Roll call, please.
Counselor Morales.
Aye.
Counselor Ray.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Can we get Mr. Scavron's abacus returned?
It was a technical glitch.
Oh, you didn't ever have that problem when you were using an abacus. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2013 dash 12, a resolution supporting an application for New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program funding. Mr. Pena.
Mayor, counsel. This resolution is also very similar to the last one. We're looking to put in an application for MAP funding. We're also doing a second phase of another one of our major streets, which is College Avenue. The first phase did go all the way up to Cooper Street from Texas to approximately where the library is. We would like to continue that project all the way to East Street with the very similar improvements that we did on the first phase, which would be paving, drainage improvements, sidewalks where needed, curb and gutter where needed. And we're also going to be looking at some lighting within this project. And the lighting that we're looking at is solar to help with electricity costs.
And we have had discussions with Western New Mexico University regarding the project and making sure that College Street ties into the downtown area.
And they are very supportive of the project.
And they have been. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, any discussion from the council?
Just a quick question. Would there be a match for us?
Yes, there's a 25% match on this. The application is right around a million dollars, so our match would be about $250,000, if we got the entire amount.
And the funding will come from that?
It will come from general fund, or we probably have to get a loan to do the entire match, or we would probably look at getting enough funds to complete this entire project, depending on how much was awarded to us. But we would make that decision at the time of the award, and that's when we would come back to the council to see if we would, are going to accept it, depending on the amount that's awarded to us. Because we would like to complete that entire project so we can have that tie-in between Western and the downtown.
Our grocery receipts are also looking quite swell so far.
So far, as of this point, we're 9.5% above last year, and last year was our highest revenues ever, so we're doing pretty well right now.
Any other discussion?
We have both of the projects. We do feel that both of these applications are very strong, because we do have our designs almost complete on both of these projects. So there'll be really strong applications that are going up to the state level.
As well as the colonial one, we're able to use the phase one of that project as match for that. So we have already about $700,000 worth of match for that other project. So, and this one, we don't have that type of match, but we have all the engineering and we're almost shovel-ready, basically. So that's what is our advantage on the second application.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment. Since I've been on the council and well before I ever entertained being on the council, there's been several roads that have always been in question, and we always get talk about improving our roads. This is one of probably the top five I've heard in the last decade. Very important road. It is under, we need to do something, because it's not one of the highways. Hudson, Silver Heights, all that gets taken care of by the state. Outside of those thoroughways, this is probably one of the most important economic roads that we have. This is a very important project, and I'm glad that we're even looking at this, that we've done part of this project, that we're even trying to move forward and have some potential for completing this while I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, counsel. I move to approve resolution 2013 dash 12, a resolution supporting an application for New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program MAP funding.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion. To approve resolution number 2013 dash 12, a resolution supporting an application for New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterial Program MAP funding. Roll call.
Counselor Morales.
Aye.
Counselor Ray.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Beeson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2013 13, the Town of Silver City approving an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonial Infrastructure Fund. Don't ever mess with me, Robert, because you'll end up at the bottom of the agenda every time.
Mayor, counsel, what you have before you is a resolution to support a second application to the Colonial Infrastructure Fund. This one will be for sewer system improvements to bypass a section of sewer line which experienced frequent blockages and is inaccessible by equipment for both emergencies and maintenance. This sewer line is located along in the Royal from F Street, which runs easterly and ties into Market Street. In the past, we've had numerous blockages. It's inaccessible. The crews have to go in and rot out and clear the blockages in this section of sewer line by hand with rods. They've actually even gotten injured while doing this. So this project is something that we've needed, and the people that live in the area are really in support of, because they don't have to experience the odors and the potential hazards with sewer backups.
Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, any comments from the council? Seeing none, entertain a motion? Is it you again?
Yes.
Get after it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number 2013 dash 13, the Town of Silver City approving an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonial Infrastructure Fund.
Mr. Mayor, my second motion is stated.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second, no discussion. To approve resolution number 2013 dash 13, the Town of Silver City approving an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonial Infrastructure Fund. Roll call.
Counselor Beeson.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Ray.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.